Good evening. My name is Rob Cagnetta, and this is a meeting of the South Kingstown Rhode Island Zoning Board of Review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, William Rosen, Arlene Hicks, Jeff Ilya, and William McDonald. Also present are Amy Goines, South Kingstown Special Legal Counsel, and Jamie Gorman, the South Kingstown Building and Zoning Official, and Jessica Spence, our Administrative Support Associate. So, the Board is made up of eight people with five regular voting members. A minimum of four members are needed to be present to vote. In the event that a regular members are absent or recused, an alternate will step in. No more than five members are entitled to a vote, and at least three voting members are needed to grant the relief requested. Tonight, the voting members are myself, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Hicks, Mr. Ilya, and Mr. Dupont. I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. McDonald. Is that correct? Nope, I'm sorry, Mr. Ilya.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicants are here for either a dimensional or use variance or a special use permit. The Board is a quasi-judicial body created by the South Kingstown Ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence, and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try to let everyone speak unless you get carried away, or it's deemed not relevant. So, for the interest of time, please be brief and on point. We do our best not to argue and keep things civil, and we try to start our last petition by 10 o'clock. After we introduce your petition, please step forward to that microphone, adjusting it as necessary. Make sure the red button is on when you're speaking, and then you can turn it off when you're no longer speaking. Clearly state and spell your name for the record. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth. After that, you will present your petition with the witnesses, any witnesses, to testify in support of your application. The Board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. So, after the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone with questions in support of or in opposition to, the petition can step forward to the microphone. You'll identify yourself, be sworn in, and present your testimony, and follow up questions from the Board. Please do not direct any questions or comments to the petitioner or any of their witnesses. We'll ask the questions to the petitioner or its witnesses after the comment period. So, after hearing all the testimony, the Board members will discuss the application and the evidence that was presented. So, we'll ask a lot of questions, and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose, and there are rules to follow per the South Kingstown's ordinance. So, really, you must give testimony to support certain facts to allow the request to be approved. So, tonight, we have dimensional variances and special use permits on the agenda. So, for a dimensional variance, you must present evidence that your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, but is not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area; that your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part; and that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area; and that your hardship by the denial of the variance will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. So, that means that the relief sought is minimal, basically, and to enjoy, reasonably enjoy the permitted use of the property. For a special use permit, you need to present evidence that the request is specifically authorized by our zoning ordinance. So, somewhere in a zoning ordinance, it has to say it's authorized, or we do not have the power to grant it, but nobody would be here if that weren't allowed. So, the request meets all the criteria in a zoning ordinance that authorizes such special use. So, the request, and also the request will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area, nor will impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. And then, all materials that we receive with each application is entered into the record, and if you have anything new to present, then you can do that as well. So, anything else we need to... Okay. So, first, we have the petition of Susan Zacone for 240 Cards Pond, 240 Cards Pond Road, Row 19E Cottage 14, South Kingstown, 02879, for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows: The applicant is seeking to construct 175-square-foot addition to the existing seasonal cottage. Lot size is 50.2 acres. The special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 203, the special use permits for additions, enlargement, expansion, and intensification; and Section 608, our coastal community overlay district; and Section 907 is standards of relief. So, the owners of the cottage of 19E14 are Frank and Susan Zacone, for property owned by Matonic Beach Properties Incorporated, located at 240 Cards Pond Road, South Kingstown, assessor's map 92-1, lot 9-28, and is zoned R200. Good evening. How are you? Good. So, just make sure the mic is pressed, just press the person. All right, so tell us, and you are, I'm sorry?
I'm Susan Zincon.
And can you spell that for us, please?
It's S-U-S-A-N-Z-I-N-C-O-N-E.
Excellent. And do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So, what would you like to do?
We'd like to add a small, closing actually, a deck that's on the property, just to give us a little more living space. We have four adult children and their spouses, and we just had the arrival of our eighth grandchild, so it gets a little hectic in 500 square feet.
Excellent. And is this taking over anything existing? Is there anything in that spot now that you're closing in, or it's an actual addition to the building?
Yeah, the deck, it's in place of the deck that's there.
So, there's a deck there now, and you're just gonna basically, for all intents and purposes, close it in? So, it's not gonna get bigger than that porch?
No.
Or that deck?
There's a side shed and a deck that will, this addition will be in place of that side shed and the deck.
Okay. Are you getting any closer to anyone next door?
Not at all. Nope. We don't have anyone on one side of us, and on the other side, there's nothing being done in that spot right there, so we won't be getting any closer to anyone. We're on a corner there.
And you're on a corner too? So, it's not a question of access on either side?
Yeah.
And you're, it shows here that you're coming a foot more, so, but, which is fine?
Right.
Okay. But that's on the side of the roadway?
That's right. Yes.
Okay. So, you're not getting any closer to the neighbors?
Not at all.
Okay. Is it gonna restrict any parking or anything like that?
Not at all. Not at all.
And it's within the expansion that you're allowed, I believe, the, is it the 50% you're still working with?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's under the 50%.
It's under?
Correct.
Excellent. All right, Board members, any questions? Mr. Daniels?
Just one, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You're showing on the right side 11 feet. Is that between the two buildings that's existing, 11 feet, on your drawing that you submitted?
That's what it says on the drawing. In between the cottages, there's parking space. That happens to be our parking space there, so we're not gonna be getting any closer to the other cottage.
So, it's 11 feet now. It's existing as 11 feet? Is that right?
Yeah, but that won't be changing with what we're doing.
Okay. And what is the, what did we establish as a minimum back in, back at some point, between the buildings, if I can ask the building official?
Mr. Vice Chair, so if the existing cottages, say, 11 feet, it just can't be reduced. But if it's in excess of 15 feet between cottages, it can be reduced, but not less than 15. So, by maintaining the 11, they're in conformance.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Board members?
I actually went out, looked at the property. I know it says 11 feet. I think it's actually bigger than that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I don't know, but it does seem a lot bigger than that.
It is. I'm not sure if they measured it right, but it seemed to me much bigger than 11 feet.
I agree, but I didn't want to dispute.
Well, you're not getting any closer regardless of it, and there seems to be plenty of feet, of feet, space between.
Yeah, that may be an error.
Okay. It's okay. All right, any other questions, Board members? None? Okay. Do you want to add anything else? Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone out there want to speak on behalf of this petition, for or against? Nope? All right, any thoughts? Any problems? No? Okay. Someone want to make a motion, perhaps? Excellent. Please, go ahead, Mr. Ilya.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Ms. Susan Zicon regarding the application ZBR-25-20 for the property at 240 Cards Pond Road, Row E19 Cottage, Cottage Number 14. The following individuals spoke at the hearing in support of the application, which was Ms. Zicon. There were no individuals that spoke additionally in support or in opposition. The materials that were entered into the record are the application as mentioned above. The Board finds that the special use is permitted, specifically authorized by this ordinance, which is permitted under zoning ordinance Section 20203, special use permit, and Section 907, standards of relief. The Board further finds that the special use does meet all of the criteria set forth in the subsection of the ordinance, due to the fact that the applicant has an expanding family and is looking to add an additional 175 square feet to the existing cottage. The Board further finds that granting the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance or comprehensive plan of the town. In doing so, the Board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been and will be made concerning, but not limited to the following matters where applicable, which is ingress and egress to the lot, off-street parking, trash and storage, utilities, screening and buffering, signs, and general compatibility. And there were no additional conditions subject to this approval.
Motion was made by Mr. Ilya. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rosen. Any other discussion? Hearing non, Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta, aye, the motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Next is the petition of David A. Guadnoli, is that right? 49 Sheldon Point Road, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02879, for a dimensional variant under the zoning ordinance as follows: The applicant is seeking to construct 172-foot addition to the single-family dwelling. The addition will be located 14.6 feet from the front property line, and required setback is 25 feet. Therefore, a relief of 10 foot six is requested. Lot size is .24 acres. A dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and Section 907 are standards of relief. Owners of the property are David and Eileen Guadnoli, for premises located at 49 Sheldon Point Roads, have Kingstown Assessor's Map 87-2, Lot 135, and is zoned R80. Is anyone here for that?
Yes.
Come on up. Tell us your name and spell it for us, please.
My name is Sandra Draper. My business is Zampa Roads Design. I've been acting as his project coordinator through the whole project.
Excellent.
Since 2024, I've coordinated the new site plans, the engineering, the architectural design, and CRNC applications and so on and so forth.
So, you've been involved?
I've been involved.
Just have the mic in front of you. You can move it, you can manipulate it.
Is this all right?
No, yeah, it was fine. It was on. It was just, it wanted you to be about six inches away. So, could you just spell and spell your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Spell your name.
Sandra, S-A-N-D-R-A.
Yep.
And Draper is, oh, there we are. Draper is D-R-A-P-E-R.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Excellent. And I believe you're also, there's an affidavit to have her speak on behalf of the applicant.
There should be. You should have received that, yes.
As part of it. Okay. So, tell us what you'd like, they'd like to do with the property.
There was an existing, and I don't know how relevant this was, I had the, I had the decision of the zoning board review when this last went for a zoning ordinance variation, a variance, rather, which was approved on June 15, 2022. Unfortunately, when I came into being, acting for Mr. Guadnoli, there were a lot of things that had to be done at that point, so we missed the final date for the review, so I had to start all over again. So, there were a lot of things that needed to be done. It needed a new site plan, and so on and so forth. Needed to have CRNC involved in fixing some of the superstructure that was there. It's an existing building. The building hasn't changed. The variance that we're seeking this time is exactly the same as the previous variance, with the addition of a small, which I have the architectural plans here, a small bedroom, kitchen, expansion over the existing deck. It's not encroaching on the existing, outside the existing deck at all.
So, it's on that northern side?
It's on the existing.
They want to bump out that bedroom, three, two and three?
Right.
Is that right? Okay.
It, I'm sorry. It's in the, it's on the...
So, it's about a 15 by 20 and a half or so?
Right. 172 square feet.
Yep.
Yeah. Do you, do you have a copy of the plan?
Yes. Yes, I believe we have the site plan and elevations and floor plan?
Right. On this, do you want me to show it to you?
Nope. No, just kind of explain us through what you're asking for and why you need the dimensional variance.
The same as before, because the, the house was built, I don't know when. I'm sorry, I can't remember that. It was built a long time ago.
Sure.
And it was on P is, so nothing changed. The only thing that really changed were all the zoning ordinances.
Okay.
And they change every, every year, it seems.
The setbacks happen, yeah, I mean, you're right. The building was built prior to this, to where the setbacks were. And you're not coming out any closer to the front?
No. There are no changes at all, apart from...
Adding to the backside.
Improving the deck and adding that small 172-feet, square-feet addition over the existing deck.
And that back deck isn't encroaching anyhow? That's 10 feet anyhow?
No. No. It's only the front piece that's encroaching.
Right.
Or doesn't conform anymore. But the land is non-conforming in its entirety. It's .24 square feet. Yeah.
Okay.
.24 of an acre, and it's R80 zoning, so it's totally non-conforming.
And is it at the end of the road? Is that why it has the bent, like it's sort of an odd shape?
It's an odd shape. It's a private road. It goes onto Potter Pond, and this is in an odd triangle, and you can continue on around the road to two other, three other houses that are actually on the water.
Okay.
But, you know, sort of built like Topsy, really, although a lot of those private estates down there were.
Sure. Okay. Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
The footprint is gonna remain the same, correct?
Yes.
And you're gonna be exactly, what is it, 11 feet from the property line?
13.6, I think.
10.6?
14.6.
14.6, yes.
Okay.
So, a relief of 10.6.
And you're taking down the stairs? There were stairs on the right-hand side, on the north?
Right. The additional structure would actually over, would go over the edge of those stairs.
Yeah, so the stairs are not gonna be there. There are gonna be stairs on the other side of the property.
Right. Right. Nothing else has changed.
Yeah.
The only thing that will change is the deck will be improved, because right now it's nonusable. It's dangerous.
And this property is on the water?
It is.
There is a dock there?
There is a dock, and that also was improved, got a CRNC.
I was out there, and there was some construction going on. Has this construction been completed, or is it on its way to being completed?
What was the construction on?
On, the construction that you're asking for today?
As far as I'm aware, nothing has gone on. We can't do anything until we get the CRNC.
Well, I didn't see the stairs there. That's why I was asking. It looked like there was, there was a building there.
Oh, I'm, not as far as, the only, the only thing...
There is some foliage that's right along the front property line, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. And so, I didn't have very good view, so I'm just guessing at what I saw, but it looked like those stairs had been removed.
I haven't been down there for, I guess, probably six weeks, but as far as I'm aware, nothing has, nothing can be moved, changed, improved, until we have all the approvals.
Okay, that's fine. My eyes sometimes deceive me.
It's more than my life's worth.
My old eyes, I should say. That's a very narrow private road.
It is, yes.
So, you're not very far off the road at all?
No.
The property is not off that road. Is the property line right on the road?
Pretty much, I would say, behind those bushes. See, it was, it was developed by the people who live next door, who I think are related, and they split it off from their house and sold this piece of property. Oh, I think it used to belong to the aunt, and people didn't worry about sorts of road frontages and things like that in those days.
Yeah, there's a, there's a property that's south, directly south of the property that I saw, near the end of the road. And as you've mentioned, there are two other properties on kind of the curve of the road there.
Right.
It opens up kind of as a cul-de-sac, as such. So, the only thing that I was curious about was whether that, those steps had already been removed or not, and whether construction was going on, because there was a construction vehicle there, as such. So, I didn't, I didn't go onto the property, so all I could see was through the foliage itself.
Okay. There was a CRNC approval for the repair of the concrete structure, because of all the beams and the pilings are steel, encased in concrete, and there was an approval from CRNC to repair some of those pilings, you know, two at a time, so there wasn't any soil, too much soil removal and soil damage.
Okay.
As the CRNC were concerned.
Okay. Well, I didn't know anything about that. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Board members? Of this witness? No? Okay. Do you want to add anything else?
No, I think I've seen enough.
No, you can be done. That's all right. It's not bad. So, if there's nothing else, you can sit down. We'll make sure, see if there's anyone else there, out there that wants to speak on behalf. So, okay. Is there anyone out there that wants to speak on behalf of this applicant, for or against?
I have something.
Yeah, please.
For the Board that I think is relevant. So, I was just speaking with the building official. As you know, the law, laws, the land use laws have been changing rapidly, and a new law that was just an amendment to the provision of state law that governs reduced setbacks for substandard lots like this one, just took effect on June 27. So, I, you, I think you know, the town amended its zoning ordinance in 2023 to provide reduced setbacks for substandard lots in conformance with state law. The law changed last year, and even though South Kingstown hasn't yet updated its ordinance, ordinances to reflect last year's batch of laws, this application was processed in, and I think it was submitted June 13 or so. It was processed in accordance with the controlling state law, which has a slightly different method for calculating those reduced setbacks. However, at this point, under the 2025 amendments, they, they wouldn't need relief. And I can let the building official provide some more detail on that. I think it's certainly up to you. They're, they're here. They've made their presentation. They've made the application. Everyone's kind of here for the party. And, you know, the application was submitted before that law took effect, but I think it's, it's important for the Board to know. If they were to withdraw and, you know, submit for a building permit, it sounds like they could get it. So, not even, and I just want to clarify what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the modification that anyone can automatically get. I'm talking about the reduction that applies as a matter of law under, under state law, that substandard lots have reduced setbacks in proportion to how undersized they are. So, I don't know if, Jamie, if you want to provide more detail, just let the Board know.
So, this being an R80 law, it requires 80,000 square feet, but it consists of just shy of 11,000. So, under the new law amendment, it's reduced by about, the setbacks would be reduced by 80%. And so, a 50-foot setback becomes just over six feet. And with the, you know, the survey submitted, there, the addition is 14 and a half feet. So, the addition improvements wouldn't need any dimensional relief based on, based on that.
So, so they, this might help them in their planning, even not knowing how far they are into it. So, you're saying they can be six feet from the sideline?
From the front yard.
From the front yard. And then, what do they, what would they have to be? So, the side is what, like six inches?
The sides would be probably close to, yeah, a foot to two feet likely, yeah.
Really?
I mean, you, to other issues at that point, getting that close to the property line.
Right.
Code-related issues and runoff and stormwater, but...
Okay.
I don't think that's their intention.
Right. Regardless, it wouldn't be a zoning board issue. So, we would be better if we didn't have it on the records, because then they wouldn't have that saying, the property wouldn't say there was a variance, because it's not needed.
I think you can ask the applicant if they, if they want you to rule on the request for the variance, or if they prefer to withdraw and just submit for a building permit and potentially revise their plans. I think you can leave that up to the applicant.
Yeah. Speak into the microphone. We just can't speak into more than one at a time.
Jamie, yes, I actually discussed this with Jamie. I had, I had redone the site, the site plan, I think it was three times, over the course of last year, because the setbacks for, for R80 changed quite dramatically. And so, I think the last time, no, the time before, the second time I sent in the plans, I thought that we wouldn't have to go for a variance because of the changes in the setback rules. But what I didn't know is that on June 27, I think it was last year, they changed it again, and so we went back. Pardon?
Share.
Oh, was it the, I lost track of it. Yes, the share. It was done. Well, I know there were three times that I changed the site plans, because I used to do all the CAD work for the engineer as well, so.
So Mr. Gorman, like you want to withdraw the petition, because you don't need, or you don't even need it on the record as, as asking, because you're, you're with this application.
I thought the last time I sent it into you, you said we would need.
And that's, and that's accurate. So two months ago, that's, that would be accurate. But between then and now, it's changed, so you would be able, or the owner would be able to apply for a building permit.
I'm sorry.
And I, I think the other option for the applicant would be if they're not sure, you could table this or continue it until next month. And then if the applicant wants to, if Ms. Draper wants to consult with the applicant and anyone else, they could, they could always withdraw it.
No.
Sorry.
Mr. Guadagnoli is already stressed. He's just been through some major surgery, and the timing, timing is of the essence. He needs to get on with this. I need to do the CRMC application, get that in, and then I need to design this little addition. So he wants to start building in, in September, October, so.
So, Mr. Gorman, when, when could you have a letter ready for them to say that they're?
Within the next two days, I could, I could prepare the letter for you to submit to CRMC within the next two days based on the law and the site plan that we have now.
Okay.
Provide, I mean, if you.
See, CRMC are not worried about the setbacks. All they're worried about is what's taking place for repair, maintenance and repair for the deck and the addition. And that's what I have on the application, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest if we could maybe table this for a little bit, and Ms. Draper could call Mr. Guadagnoli? I know he was going to be watching this on YouTube, so maybe you could speak with him. We can do the next petition.
Sure.
And then maybe call you back up, if, that way you could consult with him directly.
I would say that whatever we can do, we can get done and finished and closed off tonight. Let's do it.
So we can, we can vote on it. It's not a problem.
Absolutely.
For me, I, you know, and it's not a scar on the property at all. It's just unnecessary, so, but we'll do it.
Excuse me, one more second. However, if we vote on it, then Jamie can't issue the ascent because of the appeal period? If that is correct?
I, I think it's a moot point, really, if, if it's an as-of right. So that wouldn't hold it up?
So you don't need our decision for him to write you the letter of ascension, like to, to, that it's accepted?
I, yeah, I have to get a letter from you, and I was playing, yeah, right.
Mm-hmm. You will get that?
Yes.
Even without us doing anything from here forward?
Right.
He could do it.
Right.
Makes sense. So you're good. So you can, so it's just a matter of them withdrawing the petition. And, and if we recognize it as withdrawn, or do they, or do we just table it and let them withdraw it over email?
You can, you can let the applicant choose.
Okay, if I can, if I have to redo the site plan with the, the updated setbacks, I cannot do that unless I go to a whole new firm of engineers, because the engineering firm is closed. It's no longer in operation, so it becomes very complicated.
So the building department wouldn't need an updated site plan showing the setback line? We have the dimensions to the building from the property line, and that's what's important.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
So you wouldn't have to prepare a new plan, is what I'm saying?
All right.
For a, for a building permit or CRMC.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you could just state on the record then, that it's, that you'll withdraw the application? Okay, we just need you to put it on the record.
Yeah, just, thank you. I was about to. So you want to withdraw the petition by, because of the, the new laws that have passed, the new setbacks and?
Yes, as long as it's not going to come back to haunt us.
It won't. You'll get what you need.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
So just say you would like to withdraw the petition?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So do you need me in?
We're good.
I can go. Good.
Thank you.
You mean I don't get to make a motion?
No, you don't have to, unless you want to. You can stay late after the class is left. All right. So next is the petition of Eric Dalesio of 54 Schaefer Street, South Kingston, Route Allen 02879, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to demolish and reconstruct the existing dwelling and detached garage. The new dwelling will be located 12 foot 6 inches from the property line. The required front yard setback is 25 feet. Therefore, a relief of 12 foot 6 inches is requested. The detached garage will be 24 feet in height. The maximum accessory building height is 15 feet. Therefore, a relief of nine feet is requested. Lot size is .17 acres. A dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 401. Scheduled dimensional regulations in Section 907 are standards of belief. The owner of the property is Kendall Moore for premises located at 54 Schaefer Street, South Kingston. Accessory map 48-3, Lot 190, and is zoned R-10. So is there someone here tonight for that petition? Come on up. And Ms. Gorman, do we need to know anything specifically about the ADU criteria? I know.
I don't see anything on the ad regarding an ADU, so I guess my advice would be they, if, if an ADU is involved in this application, it can be constructed consistent with state law. And if relief is required, if it's discovered later, any relief is required, they'd have to come back.
Is, is there anything that they need to demonstrate if, if the ADU is not in compliance with the, with the laws? Or something specific we should be looking or listening for as to?
As, as I think the board knows, again, we haven't updated our ordinance to reflect the ADU law that was enacted last year that's been in effect. And I think this board has already seen and granted some, some applications for relief from the rules set forth in the law. So I, I think you can ask about it, but, but the legal effect of the application being noticed as it is tonight is if an ADU is involved, it can be constructed in accordance with what's set forth in state law relative to, you know, size limitations and, and even right to establish the ADU. If it's discovered later on that any relief is needed from any of those provisions, they would have to come back.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, good evening. And your name is?
Good evening. My name's Eric Dalesio. I'm here on behalf of the owner, Kendall Moore.
And could you spell your name, please?
A-R-I-C. First name Eric Dalesio, D-A-L-E-S-S-I-O.
Excellent. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So, and you're on record as, as being an authorized sort of spokesperson for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, excellent. So what do you guys want to do?
So basically, what we want to do is the reconstruction of the single-family dwelling on the existing nonconforming setback of 12.6 feet. So we're going to rebuild the house on the existing foundation. We like to keep the existing footprint, just so we're not impacting the site as much, you know, the least amount necessary. So we're going to keep the same foundation. There are two small sections that we would be adding small additions to, but those would fall within the setbacks of the property. So we're just trying to keep the impact on the property minimal in that regard. The existing house is uninhabitable, structurally unsound, so that's why we have to rebuild it.
So really, you're just kind of getting closer to Schaefer Street, the east side, sort of? The house is closer, I'm sorry. You're not getting closer. It is already closer. And you're going in that same footprint as it's in now?
If I understand the question correctly, yes, sir. That, that front wall that's nonconforming at 12.6 feet.
Correct.
Is not changing.
Right. And is it fairly common for that on the street? Is it, is this something that other houses farther or closer?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you there. I, from what I could tell, it kind of varies up and down the street, but they seem to be, the houses seem to be very close to the street.
So it's not out of conformance or not conformance, but it's not going to be standing out?
No, no, sir.
Board members, any questions for the witness?
I do have one question. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
At the beginning, when we were in the description, it says the setback of 12.5 feet, where you said 25 foot is required. I thought it was 18.5 feet, so the, the amount of relief requested is, you know, that's a big difference. I'm not sure if that matters or not. But when I confirm the setbacks with the town, it was 18.5 in the front required, unless I'm mistaken.
Is that, is that 19, because it does say 19.8. It is drawn on there. I don't know what that means, if it's supposed to be 25.
Yeah, I guess this is the question, when that was discussed prior to the recent legislation changes. But I mean, it's drawn, the new front portion of the dwelling will be 12.6, correct?
Correct, yes.
And I believe with the reduction, it's close to 19 feet with the reduced setbacks that have come into effect, which, but I believe it's advertised correctly, if that's the question.
I'm satisfied, as, as long as, as, the, the plans are online for the neighbors to see, the drawing is accurate. If the requirement isn't correct in the notice, I'm, I'm satisfied that this can move forward.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms. I just wanted to make sure everything was on, you know, on the, on the table.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. No, because it is, there is a discrepancy between them, and it's, and it's good to point out, point that out, so. But as long as it's, it's represented correctly on the plan as to the setback from the property line, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions, board members?
Clear up some confusion for me. At the introduction, I thought counsel said if there was a request for a dimensional variance, a height variance for an ADU, the applicant would have to come back, because it wasn't in the application, but it is in the application, so.
So I believe the, the notice represents accessory structure, height variance. I think the ADU, that detached garage is labeled as an ADU, but there's certain requirements required to establish an ADU as-of right, such as having a lot of 20,000 square feet of land area, being within an existing attached or detached building, or being for a qualifying family member. So I think the question was if it's just the height relief that's requested.
And I think I can, I can clarify a little more, hopefully. Anytime this board sees a garage, anytime since last year that this board sees a new detached accessory structure, garage, big shed, barn, whatever it is, I think, and we've mentioned this before, the board should be aware that those can now potentially become ADUs. So I think it is the question, it wasn't advertised as height relief in connection with an ADU specifically. It was advertised as height relief in connection with an accessory structure. Because once the accessory structure is legally established, meaning once you grant the height relief and it's, it's legally existing or allowed to exist, they then can, can add the ADU. And sometimes zoning boards see an application in its, you know, the plans in its final form, and sometimes the board sees, you know, garage, and here the plans are labeled as, you know, proposed ADU. I'm not sure that it makes a difference, but if, if you think it does, then I think you can ask questions about that.
Do we still need the special use application for the second floor, or is that?
That's also something that should be brought up. So the special use permit, that's in the legal notice, was an error. That's not required for this application?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Go ahead.
That the notice representing the special use permit and dimensional variance was an error on my part for drafting the notice. It should just be a dimensional variance for the front setback and the building height for the detached garage.
Okay, so in, in regards to that back garage, you are moving that garage closer to the property line? So the, the front is staying the same, but the back garage is moving closer, correct?
You're talking, the front of the house is staying the same. You're talking, now we're talking about the garage. And we proposed to move the garage further back into the property, so it's not as, you know, obtrusive to the whole lot?
Sure, sure. I mean, pretty close, though, to the back, right?
Relatively, I suppose. I believe it is still within the setbacks, though.
That's six and a half, so that, that, that's allowed to be six and a half?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So the setback line that's on the survey represents the principal structure setback line.
Okay.
The accessory structure setback line is, or would be, six feet. It's drawn as 6.5.
Perfect. Okay. So really, the only other then is the, is the height of that building, which, it's going to be a garage, or is it, is it a two, like garage on the first floor, regular, normal room height on the second floor, kind of thing?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I'm not asking if it's going to be finished or anything. It's just a matter of it being, so you want a, a, a two-level garage?
At this point, yes, sir. All we're seeking is a two, second floor for that garage. And at the current requirement of 15 feet, it's not obtainable.
You couldn't get to that?
Correct.
You couldn't have a walkable area on the second floor without that height variance?
Exactly.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions, board members? Nope. Okay. Want to add anything else?
No.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that wants to talk about this, behalf of, for or against? Come on up. Again, just state your name. Make sure the mic is on. Excellent. And state your name, spell it, please.
Hi, Sarah Lioce, L-I-O-C-E, 35 Schaefer Street.
Excellent. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. What would you like to say?
We are mainly concerned with the height of this building.
Okay.
There is no need for a 25-foot tall garage unless you intend to live upstairs or have a studio apartment or some such thing. And then ADU has been proposed, whether or not it was done correctly and is in the paperwork correctly. That is the intent. So we want that looked at very carefully. That will impact the character of this neighborhood.
Sure.
It is a very tightly packed little neighborhood and, you know, has a certain character with the mill houses in a row, you know, all being identical and built at the same time. It's an old street.
Sure.
You know, where the house is, is not an issue. We are just concerned with the dominating and privacy-destroying nature of putting a second floor on top of a garage. That will give them access to look into yards on both sides and on the street in back of them. It destroys privacy for at least four families, and we object to that.
Are there other buildings like that, secondary buildings, accessory buildings that are really tall in the neighborhood?
No, none.
It's unlike any other?
Correct. What, what's distinctive about the neighborhood and the accessory is several of the houses have, you know, where they have a driveway and a driveway between, they have a shared, single garage that both, it's one structure, but both families have. And in some cases, what they have done is if they need additional space, they have built onto the back of that. You know, keeping it closer to the street and built onto the back to maintain that lower profile, if you will.
And do people park off the street primarily in that neighborhood?
Yes. We have a couple of people, young families, who have multiple vehicles and tend to park on the street semi-regularly, but, you know, there is off-street parking. And there's, you know, if that building, instead of going up 25 feet, came into the yard so that they're losing their yard, we're not having to look at this monster structure, then I think that would take care of a bunch of the neighbor's concerns.
Sure. So you're not, it's not an issue necessarily with the one-story building that's more typical of a garage?
Correct, correct. The garage is not the objection. For me, even the ADU is not necessarily objection. I thought my stepdad was going to have to... I thought my stepdad was going to have to come and live with me, and I went to the town to find out what I could do at my house, so I don't object to the, the idea of the ADU per se, I object to the sort of looming presence of this giant structure in the neighborhood.
Yeah, okay, well, that still is part of his request, is to, as a dimensional, that, that he's asking to go higher than that. So yep, that's still in there, so we could still do that.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, hang on, but board members, any questions for this witness? Nope. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else out there want to speak on behalf, come on up, please? For, against, sorry, behalf of, hopefully not to be positive necessarily.
Hi.
Hi, please spell.
My name is Louise Richer. I'm a budding neighbor, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, you're fine, just spell your name for us, please.
Richer, R-I-C-H-E-R.
Okay, and you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yep, go ahead, tell us what you'd like to say.
Sarah said a lot of what I was going to say, so my notes are going to be a little bit of a...
That's okay, you can say whatever you like.
I read the documents that the contractor submitted where he talked about maintaining neighborhood scale or something to do with maintaining the feeling in the neighborhood, and I can't say more strongly that, I don't know how he can possibly think that. When you, you know, Sarah described how tight the neighborhood is, and one thing that, unless you, I don't know if you are familiar with Shafer Street, but when you go into the backyard, you can't tell when you're on the street what kind of a beautiful backyard is back there for all of the neighbors. I have some pictures that I've taken, just to give you a sense.
Sure. Please, yeah. And yeah, you can, you can bring it to me, that's fine, and I'll just mark him down as opposition exhibits, so... Okay, why don't you tell us about, where's...
What that shows is how private the backyard is, that is my backyard that you're looking at, straight on. The picture, I show you one picture that shows what I see when I look left, which is like natural screening between myself and my neighbor, so that my backyard is, my deck is private, my back door is private. When you look at the other side, I have planted, 30 years ago I planted really tall trees, so I'm really, I'm not completely private on my back deck, but I have a definite sense that this is my area.
No, tell me, I'm sorry, where, where are you on there?
I live south, I'm on number 50.
Okay, so right there?
Yes, so right up there, so when we are all in our backyards, we all have that same natural screen around us. So when we're on our patios, when we're on our decks, when we're on our, you know, like in our, standing in our back door, where we have privacy, when you go into the neighborhood, when you go into the, the yards, which are very, very long and narrow and they're all the same, you can look down yard, 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 and they're all, you know, landscaped lawns, gardens all around, picket fences, it's, it's beautiful. And then when you look straight through from all of our properties back, you see a rock wall that bisects the block, tall, tall trees, and then on the other side, there are our neighbors on Austin Street, they're long yards. So my point is that when you go in the back of this block, when you're in the block, it is an oasis, it's beautiful.
Yeah, sure.
Now, into this beautiful oasis, they want to build a 20-foot by 24-foot wide and, wide and deep building, which is only two feet shorter than my house, and they're going to make it go 24 feet high, but we're on a hill. So when I'm in my backyard, a 24-foot high building in the next yard is maybe going to look like 27, 28 feet. So what I did in that one picture, because I don't have AutoCAD on my computer, is I drew a yellow box that shows what I'm really going to be looking at. So when I go out my back door, that thing is going to be looming over me, and the fact that there is going to be somebody living in it with a direct view to my private area, my back door. I'm not sitting on my deck in my pajamas anymore, having coffee in the morning, or standing in my back door looking at the birds. None of that's going to happen, I'm going to feel completely exposed. I think that it is, it is way out of scale for the neighborhood, and what will that do to my property values if and when I ever want to sell the house? You know, if you're going to sell an oasis, I mean, it's not an ocean view, but it's an oasis, if you're going to sell that, that's going to sell at a different price from you're selling a building like that, that's going to have probably seasonal rentals, it could change every three months, it's not like necessarily, it's not like your regular neighbors that are going to stay there and live with you for 30 years, the way we've all been living together, these people are going to be rotating. Now, the regulation about the 20,000 square foot property, that property is only 7,900 square feet. So if the Rhode Island law says you have to have 20,000 square feet, there's a reason why somebody came up with that number. And to put an ADU on a property that's half the size, well, that's one zoning regulation that they want tossed. They want the height regulation tossed. And the other regulation that I had seen was not only was it 20,000 square feet, but it was to accommodate a disabled relative. This house is not going to be owner occupied, it's owned by a woman who lives in Richmond, and she built that house, or she's building that house for her dad to live in the house.
Sure.
Which means it's going to be somebody completely different, not family, that's going to be living in that ADU, which is not what the rule says.
And that's, that's not necessarily what they're here for, is to ask for the, the ADU, so it's for the height, and so you're saying...
But it says garage ADU on their paperwork, so...
Right, but that, that doesn't have to do with the dimensionals, the only part that they're applying for is, is what the application is for. The special use says an ADU isn't on there as, as part of the petition.
So the applicant, I think, is looking to establish an ADU, and there were, there were three potential paths, and rather than coming to the zoning board to seek relief for a lot area, another path is get permission for an accessory structure to be built on the property, and then establish an ADU within it, so...
But you're saying that, that this is, this is going to change the, the character of the area?
Look at that picture with the big yellow box. I mean, I don't know what else to say, do you, am I, you think I'm out of line?
No, no, you're making your point, that's, that's why I just wanted to make sure that that's what you're, you were...
Yeah, my point is, it is a looming, out-of-scale building for the neighborhood that is the way it is. And I'm, I'm going to lose all of my privacy because that neighbor is going to be right there, where my house is. It's going to be like they're, they're direct, they're six feet off my property line.
And there are no other buildings like that surrounding you?
No, the only building that's back there is my shed and it's 13 feet high, and this building is going to be maybe eight feet, 10 feet away from that. And it's going to, it's going to just, it's like the Trump Tower.
Sure, well...
Without the gold.
Well, thank you. Any other questions for this witness? No? Thank you very much, I appreciate what you have to say, thank you. Good evening.
I'm also a little nervous, my name is Nancy Lynn Beatty, N-A-N-C-Y-L-Y-N-N-E, it's a long name.
Nope, perfect, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, what would you like to say?
Beatty is spelled B-E-A-T-T-I-E.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
I live in that little tiny square on the other side, I'm the other budding neighbor. The property used to actually be in the 1920s, one piece of property. And they built that other little house next to it for their in-laws, as, you know, way back in the 20s, an ADU, I guess. You can see where he's going to, by the way, I want to commend the contractor, he's been very good, he's been very kind, he's kept his people quiet, they've been very neat, all those things, so this has nothing to do with that. It's just the fact that the building is so high, it's so large. I have a very small backyard, as you can see, we have a hedge that we keep at about five feet, five and a half feet, and we just can't use our backyard anymore. And as you can see, our yard is excessively small compared to everyone else's yards. There is no place to be, you know, unless I want to be with them. Also, I also feel that it's a backdoor way of getting their ADU. And if you look at that property, that means you're now going to have two separate groups or families on that property. There's, there's going to be problems with parking, we're going to have to listen to people to search out their cars, you know, like the college kids do, we have one rental property across the street where the college kids already are. All the rest of the neighbors have been there for, I'm the baby of the group, and I've been there for 26 years. Okay, and it's just crazy to think of that big, huge thing, and I don't know where the windows are going to be, you know, but they're going to face me somewhere, and I'm going to have to have people looking at me, and I'm going to not see what they're doing, and it's just, it's very upsetting.
Sure, sure, so again, you, you think it's sort of out of the character?
It is most definitely, every house there is just like a two-story mill house. My house is out of character, but it's a little tiny house, you know? Everybody else's house is a mill house, except for two houses way further down the street that are also on the other side. And they're, they're two stories, but they're not, they don't have anything in their backyards, all the garages are little.
So, I mean, but by, by right, they're allowed to have a, a garage back there? It has to be under 15 feet?
There are people who have garages, and there are people who have sheds who don't have garages just for a little bit of storage. Because a lot of the yards are too small for a garage, the driveway is too small, like she said, you have shared garages for some of these people, but nothing is that tall.
But the height is out of character?
It's 15 feet, and that, because of the hill, that works, most people even, don't even have it that high.
Right, okay.
So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you. Do you guys have any questions? Anyone else want to speak on behalf? So please, just state your name and spell it, please.
Hi, Kathleen Maryland, M-A-R-Y-L-A-N-D.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, and where are you in relationship to the house?
I'm at 40 Shafer, which is on the same side as, as the house.
Yep, right there, three, three-way, okay.
Yes, and you can see, my yard goes back, and we all have really narrow lots, and they go back quite a ways, and I don't have anything... If I have to sit in my backyard and look to my left, I'm going to see this huge 24-foot structure sitting there. And as the road goes up, the building will get higher, so that was my, that's my objection to it. It totally changes the whole character of the street. All those little houses are, my house was built in 1913. I have a shed on my property, I can't even fit a garage on my property. Because of the variance, I wouldn't have been able to put a garage on the right side of my property because I have enough room. And I would never consider...
Well, you should ask, because that's, that's changing.
But now there's change. All I have is a little shed that used to be an outhouse.
You could potentially have more, but yeah, of course, but you're saying again, it's too tall, and the accessory building is too tall.
The whole character of the street, and the concerns also about it turning into a rental property over the garage, which would cause more traffic and more parking and more issues on the street.
Well, unfortunately, we're only, we're only here to, about the height, so I, not much we're going to do about the rest, so I appreciate that.
Everybody before me said everything that I want to say.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions, board members? No? Thank you. Sir, do you want to come on up? Just state and spell your name, please.
My name's Darian Glouglin, D-A-R-I-E-N-M-C-L-A-U-G-H-L-I-N.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Excellent, so what would you like to say?
So I live directly behind this property on 55 Austin Street, so kind of the opposite view of them. And I guess my major concern was, you know, there was a small existing garage. I, I mean, I love all the work you guys have done, everything looks great so far, and it looked, I believe from what I saw from the plans, you guys are looking to put an addition on kind of those two screened-in porches?
Yeah, we can ask him that, yeah, just ask us, we'll ask him.
So like, you know, I don't have any queries with that, like, you know, I think that'll fit the aesthetic of the neighborhood and everything. You know, one of my major concerns, though, is, you know, I have really young kids, and this garage is going to be pushed, you know, basically all the way back to my property line, whereas the garage used to be right next to the existing house.
Sure.
So it feels like it's kind of just thrown into the back corner, like almost onto my lot. You know, and one of the reasons we purchased this house was because, you know, we have a huge backyard, which is great for kids to play in, which is, you know, very tough to find in this area. And it, you know, it kind of makes me nervous, you know, with the, not only the height, because, you know, it's an above-ground dwelling unit, there, there's going to be people living in there that I don't necessarily know, if they're going to be there short-term, long-term, but, you know, my kids are going to be in this back area, and kind of the whole view of the backyard changes too, because, you know, when I'm in my property looking back towards this house, you know, I can see the existing house, you know, and, you know, I could maybe previously see just the tip of the roof of that old garage.
Sure.
And now, there is kind of like a, you know, where the older landscaping is and mature trees are, the stone wall, you could see the daylight through between all the houses and everything, and now this, you know, large structure is going to go in, and that's going to completely close off that whole area, all the daylight coming through there, with no real privacy barrier or anything.
Sure.
And, you know, if I did want to put something in there, it'd be thousands of dollars to get mature landscaping in there, or years and years, by that time my kids will all be grown and, you know, this time the plant a tree was 30 years ago, so...
Kids grow faster than trees.
So I guess that's just my major concern, you know, I don't have any issues with, you know, the, the existing house and that footprint. And, you know, like, if, if they needed to put, like, moving up on that slightly or whatnot, I don't see any issues with that, but it's just, that, that structure moving up and back kind of just becomes quite invasive on my property, and that was my concern.
Sounds like the back can happen, it's just the up part that they're asking for.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I do get a little concerned about the back, because it's, especially if there's going to be some sort of ADU, whether it's like down and back, it's going to be closer to my property than it is to their house almost, if like I'm out in the backyard.
Sure.
So, you know, I just...
Sounds like that from our building official, that a one-story building, or a building that's under 15 feet can be about six and change feet away from that back property line, so...
And I understand that's the ordinance, and I know that can be...
But you're saying the height definitely is going to be more of a concern? For a change of the area?
Yes.
Excellent. Board members, any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. Anyone else out there? Did you want to come back up and, and, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to add some, yep, got to come back up, unfortunately.
I'm just hoping we made it clear, none of us, none of the neighbors have a problem with the house part.
Sure.
And none of us have a problem with having a garage. We just don't want it to be a behemoth.
You don't want, you don't want the height variance of, to the 24 feet?
That's the only thing that we would be against.
Sure, that makes sense, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, would you like to come on, come up, and you certainly heard the concerns of the neighbors, did you want to, because, yeah, please?
Yeah, I just, I didn't, now I'm realizing the impact on the neighbors, I, I want to make it clear, you know, the homeowner has no intention of invading anyone's privacy or, you know, invading anyone else's property. They're, at this point, after speaking with her this afternoon before the hearing, you know, they're simply looking for usable space above their garage. And I understand, you know, everyone's concerns, and I just wanted to, you know, speak on that and say, you know, that, you know, you're not going unheard or ignored, or we're not trying to backdoor anyone, they're simply looking for, you know, space to utilize above the garage.
Okay.
And if, you know, that's not in the cards for them, then so be it.
So, I mean, well, okay, we can, we certainly will talk about it as board members in terms of how everyone's feeling based on the presentation so far. I mean, is it something that they're willing, because if, if we make a vote, it could be to, let's say, do everything else but the, the variance for the height of the garage?
Right, yeah, so just, you know, the intention behind that, the husband is an artist and he needs like, like, he uses loft space in their current home. They do intend to be there at some point, and her father is moving up from down south. And he's 80 years old, and they were just wanted to, they wanted to build something, you know, without offending anybody, but to have a space for him eventually. you know, without offending anybody, but to have a space for him eventually. So, that's why, you know, we're not really pursuing the ADU at this point. It's just, we want the structure to be there, and if we can get the height where it's usable space above the garage, that's what we're looking for.
I mean, it sounds like that it's universally not liked.
No, not at all. Strong opposition.
You know, and, and the whole point is the, to not sort of create that sort of, you know, sort of the appearance of, of the neighborhood, and not to sort of interrupt that.
Right, definitely not trying to create a rift in the neighborhood.
Right.
And up until this point, I had no idea how strong that was.
Okay. Okay. Well, just be warned, I mean, it might, if you, if you want to maintain the petition, then we can discuss it, and if we come up with a decision that sort of allows it all except for the, or allows the front of the house variance, but doesn't allow the garage, that could happen.
Understandable. I just kind of want a decision on everything if, you know, possible, just so I can go and give information to the client and, you know, make our decision from there and how we're going to proceed.
Sure. I appreciate that. Board members, do you have a question? Oh, sure, Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, is the property owner occupied currently?
Nobody's living at the, the, the home currently is uninhabitable, so nobody's living there.
Okay. Is the intent, once it's made habitable, that it will be owner-occupied? Will the owner occupy the property?
It's certainly, I can't say that 100% that that is the intention, but I believe that she is building a home for herself. Like, she's not intending to rent it out to a bunch of college kids, as far as I know. I wish you were here to clarify on that point, but, you know, it's definitely not just to stack rentable units. That is definitely not the intention.
Ms. Ilia.
So, you had mentioned that, I think, the owner's husband, the word you used was a studio, but in your application, it clearly says livable second-floor space.
Right, that's in reference to her father, who will be moving up from, I don't know where he's from, South Carolina, I believe, and he's in his 80s. So, it's just potentially.
So, there's a difference between studio use and a livable. Livable means that there are amenities in there that can be, that someone can live there full-time. So, there's some discrepancy, I have some, some concerns about that. The other thing that concerns me, too, is the application says that, or you've indicated that the application and this ADU will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood, and that the ADU are consistent with the neighborhood's scale and density. Clearly, we've heard from five different neighbors that have indicated that that is not consistent. So, it seems like the application is a little bit misleading.
I understand your concern, and certainly not trying to be misleading, and from my perspective, I believe everyone's position on that is all, you know, that's their opinion. And in my opinion, I wasn't trying, and I'm certainly not trying to offend anyone else's opinion about, you know, it being offensive. We're certainly not intending to build an offensive structure to just shove college kids in, like, they're not, they're not intending to rent this out to college students, as far as I know. I'm, I'm just here to, they want usable space above the garage, and they had mentioned possibly that her father might move into it. She, I also talked to the homeowner, and she said if, you know, if it's, it's, turns into this huge battle over the, the potential ADU or raising the garage height, that, you know, she's, it's not really her intention anyway, so she doesn't really care that much about it.
Just for argument's sake, how old is their father?
He's in his 80s. I don't know his exact age.
So, would it be practical for him to be going up and down that side of stairs on a regular basis to live? Doesn't seem practical.
Might not seem practical, but I'm not, I can't speak on that. And I'm not trying to, you know?
No, you're fine. You're, you're representing.
Trying to be as respectful as possible.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. Hicks?
Yeah.
Oh, sir.
Again, I'm confused. Who's going to live in the main house? I thought the father might live in the main house. Now you're saying the father might live above the garage? So, who's going to live in the main house?
At this point, I don't know who's going to live in the main house. I assume that the homeowner will live in the main house.
Okay, and you also mentioned that they wanted space above the garage, you know, as additional space. If it's for something like a studio for the husband, is there any way to incorporate studio space ground, you know, garage ground level rather than up, next to the garage or something like that?
Certainly, at this point, I believe, based on what I've learned at this hearing and after hearing from the neighbors, I think that's something that I'm going to try to pursue with the homeowner. Absolutely. I just wanted a decision on everything, and, you know, I, again, I'm not trying to backdoor anything, or we're not trying to backdoor anything, we're just trying to see what our options are. Because of, because of all the information about her father, if they're going to move in, if they're moving in, is the husband going to have studio space, that kind of
Any other board members? Mr. Rosen?
Let me clarify something. The main house, how, what's the height of the main house going to be?
The exact height is undetermined. The plans are being drawn up right now. We're kind of waiting on a decision here about how we're going to utilize the space, but it's certainly going to be well under the allowed, I think it's 35.
I'm hearing from my neighbor that it's 26 feet, 10 inches.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
You're saying that's what the?
That's what the plan says.
Right.
Plan says.
Yeah.
And the, the garage is going to be 15 feet, correct? No, no, just the garage part, not the ADU, the garage part.
Correct. Well, yeah, if I understand the question correctly, yes.
A normal garage is approximately what, what height?
It would have to be below 15 feet.
Below 15. Okay, so you, then you put something 10 feet above that at 25 feet?
Yeah, the number that we came up with at 24 feet was just enough to get a standable height above an exit, the garage.
Okay. So, the garage and the ADU is not going to be any larger than the main house?
No.
In terms of height, I mean?
No.
I just wanted that clarified in my head. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other board members? Mr. McDonald?
I would just say, you know, based on what I've heard, I mean, the neighbors have spoken and clearly have articulated, and I agree that the proposed height of the garage will alter the general character of that, of the.
Do you have a question, sir?
The question I, I would, I would have, then, is that have you looked at alternatives from going up? I know we talked a little bit about, you know, adding on to the side or even moving it closer, or even adding on to the house itself versus this type of a proposal?
I certainly have pursued that with, you know, discussing design with, with the homeowner, and it seems like they were, if they could avoid sprawling out into the yard and losing yard space, I think their concern was yard space, and they hadn't really, until this hearing, you know, the, the privacy concern didn't really, you know, didn't click until, you know, I'm going to have to go back and say, you know, there's real privacy concern here, maybe we should sprawl out a little further on the ground level as opposed to going high. So, I, and to answer your question, you know, I had, did touch on it, but I'm definitely going to push on it when I go speak to the homeowner.
Okay. Anything else? Nope? Thank you. Want to add anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to mention something else? Come on up. Oh, you're good, thank you. We'll come on up. And just state your name again, just so we know.
Louise Richard.
Please.
I just wanted to clarify a little bit. There seems to be some confusion about who's living where in the house.
Right. Well, just so you know, that's not really relevant to, to, to the request, which is as a, as a variance, which is setback, so how they're using the building isn't necessarily, shouldn't be, is not part of our decision.
Okay.
You certainly can state it, but it's not necessarily relevant to the decision we make.
Well, the whole question that the Adele asked, having to do with, you know, an 80-something year-old man climbing up the stairs.
Right.
The homeowner is not, has no intention of moving into that house. She bought that house to rehab for her dad, and she's not even sure he's going to be willing to come up here at this point, because he's living in an airstream trailer in his other daughter's backyard in Maryland, and he's settled.
The, the, the thing is, is that these buildings will be here in perpetuity beyond anything that exists now.
Correct.
So, any decision being made is going to affect that property for the long term.
Correct.
So, we even have to think beyond the current situation.
Well, right, right.
So, yep.
But just.
But I, I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, anyone else out there want to speak on behalf of this? All right, we, we can close the meeting, right, and just have a discussion between members. So, Mr. McDonald, you, you mentioned some of your concerns about?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, the concern I have, and I think it's been echoed by many of the neighbors, is that the, not, I'm fine with the house and the way that is being proposed, but the garage seems to be, you know, atypical for that area. It seems to be impacting both the privacy and the general character of that area. And for that reason, you know, I would, I would have a hard time if I was to vote on this as not a voting member today, that this would meet the ordinance.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hicks, how are you feeling about it?
Okay, well, I did ride by there, and I took a good look at the property. And again, my first thought when I looked at the property was, oh my gosh, that's going to be a big garage in that backyard. And now, I guess you all agree. So, I was concerned about the height of the garage, the size of the garage.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I would listen tonight, see what I learned.
Mr. Ilia, how?
Sorry. Yes, I have the same concerns. Unfortunately, I think the application is for both and not broken out independently.
We can, we can break it up, based on who makes the motion, they can only allow part of it.
I have no objection to the height of the house. I think that's reasonable, but the ADU, I would agree that I think it would impact the neighborhood negatively, and I have a question about the intent of issues right now. So, I would be a no on, on the garage.
Right, for, for the height reasons, not for the ADU reasons.
Just for the height reasons, how it would impact the surrounding areas.
Mr. Rosen?
I guess I don't have the same concern as some of my colleagues. I walk around my neighborhood quite often. It's somewhat similar, well, it's a little different than this, but there is an approval that we gave recently for a garage and a living space above that garage. And at first, I thought it was going to be a very, very large structure with respect to the house, which was much, much smaller in my mind than this house is going to be. And as I walk by that structure nowadays, and I see what they've done for it, the builders have done a very good job, and that structure is not that large as it, as everybody is imagining it's going to be. So, I'm going to, I, I'm okay with the height of this structure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one, two, three, four, five individuals speak against the, the height, particularly about the height of, of the garage. And if I were to combine that testimony into one, it seems to be clear that the structure is not compatible with the neighborhood. And I would, on that, I would, I would reject the application. Secondly, there is no irrefutable testimony that a owner is going to live on that property. In order for an ADU to be built, the owner must live on that property. We don't have that testimony. We have confusing testimony in that regard, as to whether this may be an ADU eventually, may not be an ADU, who's going to live there, is the owner going to live there? So, there are two parts to the, of, of the application, I believe, and it should be rejected.
Well, I would, I would agree with, there certainly was strong testimony against its height, and I, I kind of agree to the fact that it does seem like it would be daunting for the neighborhood for it to be that large. So, but it sounds like that, that we'd make a motion to do that. So, does Mr. Daniels, you want to give it a shot?
Mr. Chairman, do we want to ask if they want to withdraw and perhaps come back with a different plan?
Well, we, can't we sort of make a motion to approve the main building's variance, but not approve? Can we split it like that? Are we allowed to split it?
You, you can do that.
Okay.
But you can also ask if, hearing the, the views of the board, you can also ask the applicant if they want to live with that decision that it seems like the board is about to make, or table it till next month, or?
Okay, I can certainly ask, yeah. I felt like you, you gave some testimony to suggest that you'd be fine, no, not fine, but they would understand if we didn't accept that aspect of the, the height of the garage. If you, you would, if you want to speak, you should be, you know, yes, come up to the microphone, please. So, the idea would be that, that we, it doesn't sound like that we're going to approve it. So, we can either, they don't have to table it or resubmit by any means, we just make the motion to do such.
Correct.
We can split it, yes, yes. So, it sounds like that's going to be the case. So, unless you, you want to table it, or we can, if you want to consider anything else, if it's a matter of moving it, or any, any other option that you guys want to consider.
If my preference has any impact whatsoever, I'd like to split it and get a decision on the main house. I think that's our primary concern. And then, as far as the garage goes, I'm okay with going back and talking to the homeowner and hitting the drawing board again. So, if that means, whatever's easier, if that means withdrawing it, so there's no negative mark, I don't, whatever's easiest, we don't really, I think we're good with that.
That's fine.
We're not trying to, you know, cause a big rift here, so.
Nope, we'll just make a motion, it sounds like we're going to end up making a motion to, to allow the main house and its current location to be built there, and for that variance to be approved, but not the garage.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that okay, Mr. Daniels?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Do you want to do it? Or have you?
Are we, let's go back to the board discussion. Are we prepared to deny the garage in its entirety, or the height requested on the garage?
And, and I think if, if the board wants, you can fashion the decision as approve the application except for the garage, just specifically.
In total?
Yeah, in other words, you can do it in one motion, and it can be an approval for the main dwelling, but specifically exclude height relief for the garage.
But they can still have the garage?
They can still have the garage?
They can still have.
So, we deny the height?
A height-compliant garage.
Okay, I got that. Want me to do it?
Please.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the, partially approve the petition of Eric Delesio on behalf of the owner Kendall Moore for premises located at 54 Shafer Street in South Kingston.[1679.72] Suspect map 483 lot 190 zoned R10. The chairman has read the application into the record and has identified all the documentation that has been placed into the record. The Mr. Delesio spoke on behalf of the application, and the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land. And the relief relief that he is requesting on the main building is a relief of 10.6 feet. The 20, the setback is 25 feet. The addition is located 14.6, so he's looking for a relief of 10.6. The second part, so 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 the board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action, and the granting of this requested partial variance will not alter the general characteristics of the surrounding area. The board on the second part of this application denies the height variance that the applicant has restricted, has has wanting to construct, however. We heard testimony from five residents, both Butters and nearby residents, that convinced the board that the to grant the height would would mean that it would, the building would not be in compliance with the surrounding neighborhood. So the board rejects the height application on the garage. The garage can be allowed without the the height restriction, but cannot go beyond what is originally proposed. So with that, the board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if this dimensional variance on the main building is not granted, does does amount to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. Once again, because the setback on the main building is not being being affected with the exception of the the 10.6 feet that they're requesting on the main building. So with that, I move approve, a partial approval of the application and a denial of the height sought on the accessory building.
Mr. Daniels made the motion. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Ilya. Any discussion? Mr. Rosen?
Are there going to be two votes or one?
Uh, just one. Yep, because if it passes on the first, then then that would be enough.
The motion was to approve the relief for the main dwelling and specifically exclude approve. Wasn't a motion to deny, but the motion to approve does not include height relief to the garage, so only one vote is necessary.
He used the term denial, and you're using the term exception.
The motion was, motion to partially approve it. I think, but I think your motion was very clear. I think, and certainly when it's written, it's going to be very clear what was granted and what wasn't.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen? Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Hagnetta?
Aye.
Martian partially passes. So you'll get clarification, but I think it's it's pretty clear as to as to what the intent was. So, but thank you. Um, yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. But you know what? Come up, come up to the mic, just ask to ask it on the mic, please, just so we have it on the record.
Just to be clear, because there's a lot of back and forth, and I know there's formalities that you have to adhere to. So the house setback is okay. Garage height is not part of the, it's a basically a no without a no.
The building, accessory building can be under 15 feet. And if you have questions as to how far from the property line, just verify with the building inspector. But it is allowed under 15 feet, pretty much within six feet of the edge of the property.
Everything in the application except for the height is good?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Anyone need a break? You okay? Oh, we're all, we're all set. Oh. Thank you. Well, hey, no problem. That's what we're here for. We have better staff, though, than we do us. So, okay. So next is the petition of Perry Rasso, 629 Succotash Road, South Kingston Road 02879, for a special use permit and dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to rebuild the restaurant with alcohol use code 56.1, which was damaged by fire. The new building will include an 86-square-foot vestibule, and the first floor will be elevated to comply with FEMA regulations. The building will be 23 and a half feet from 23 feet 6 inches from the front property line and 11 feet from the rear property line. The front yard setback is 40 feet, and the rear yard setback is 30 feet. Therefore, a relief of 16 feet 6 inches and 19 feet is requested. Lot size is .8 acres, and a dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section 401 Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and a special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, section 907, continuation or extension of special uses. So the owner of the property is PKW LLC for premises located at 629 Succotash Road, South Kingston, Suspect map 872, lot 189, and is zoned CW Commercial Waterfront. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Noonan. I'm the attorney for the owner and applicant and for Perry Rasso. I was here a few months ago when we got the extension for the Matunik Market, and a lot has happened since then in terms of moving forward with the rebuilding of the Matunik Oyster Bar Restaurant, which is what we're here for tonight. The legal relief is needed essentially because we're building on property that had been permitted by this board for special use permits, because it's a restaurant with alcohol, as well as the dimensional variances that the chairman called out in in the notice. Mr. Rasso's intention and the plan show is to rebuild what you see up here, which is the, what existed before the fire occurred. And those of you who have been there know that it's sort of been added on over periods of time. I think the last time we were here was for the roof deck that was done during COVID, was the last time for the restaurant that we were here. And so Mr. Rasso is going to be taking this opportunity to rebuild the restaurant, maybe, not that it wasn't before, but in a little more cohesive, clean slate, if you will, to start it. So I have the architect who will be testifying in a little while. But I did just want to point out that this is, as you said, under section 907C, the continuation or extension of a special special use permit. We are, and what we want to highlight here tonight also, is that we are expanding on the interior some. And that's, we're going to highlight that as we go through it. And a lot of that is for the back of the house type stuff that now that we're, we can do a more cohesive structure. There were levels and decks on different floors that were covered and uncovered. So we'll go through those sort of floor by floor to explain what we're doing. But the key thing is, we're on the same footprint, and we're not increasing the seating capacity, all right? I want to commend the town of South Kingston. Now, you're part of this process, too. After the fire, they reached out to Perry, they reached out to us, and we had a meeting here in this town hall, council chambers, with your town manager organizing all the help. So we want to thank the town for that. But the goal for Mr. Rasso is to rebuild what was there before. So I want to start just looking at the site plan here. What we're really talking about tonight is the building. The tent and the pergola areas will still be there, but the the building is what we're talking about tonight. And then bear in mind, what we're asking for is an additional, it's approximately 86 square feet on the ground floor of additional space, and that's for a vestibule to allow for ADA access. And then really primarily on the second floor is an increase of some square footage there for spreading out the areas, if you've been up to the second floor, to spread out the areas, make the service areas cleaner, and in the back, you know, allow for some additional storage, dry storage, liquor storage, offices, that sort of thing. And then up on the roof, there'll be an expansion of the rooftop, not a change in the use, but an expansion. I looked back at the decisions, and this board approved a 1,500-square-foot rooftop back in, I think it was 2020. We did it, I'm sure, virtually at that time. What was actually built was around 1,200 square feet, and we're proposing about 1,600 square feet. So the rooftop's actually a fairly minimal increase. But overall, it's about 1,375 square feet additional, internal, internal, same footprint. We do still need to go to CRMC, and I can guess that at CRMC, some of that's going to be cut back because we're proposing a cantilevered part of the building on the second floor. And while you guys care more about the footprint, CRMC cares about the roof coverage. So we're here asking for what we believe is the plan we want, recognizing it may get cut back by CRMC. So that's really what we're going to be talking about tonight. And with that, then, I will turn it over, and I'll question him, but the architect, who had worked with Perry on some of the renovations before and is here tonight, Alex Zakurski. I'll share the mic here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Hello, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Zakurski. Could you just please spell your name and state it?
Yes, Alex Zakurski, S.I.E.K.I.E.R.S.K.I.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent, go ahead.
Different heights, as could be. By whom are you employed?
I am the owner and principal architect of Greenlee Design Services, Inc.
And are you a registered architect?
I am.
And can you give us some of your background?
Yes, I've participated on multiple boards in my local town, town master plan, town energy committee. I've also held my own practice for quite a few years, done over about 200 projects. And I've worked for, oh, probably over eight different firms of different scales through in the Boston area and worked on hundreds of projects there through other firms.
So you've testified before boards like this, as well as being a member of them?
I have, yes.
I don't recall if you qualify as experts, but I'd ask him to be a qualified architect.
It certainly sounds like that he has the credentials, so yes, he would be recognized as such.
Are you familiar with the Matunik Oyster Bar?
That I am.
And can you tell the board how you're familiar with it?
We had worked on the bar renovation, and we had started that with Perry in 2021.
And what were you asked to do recently in regards to the Matunik Oyster Bar?
After hearing of the tragic news, we were asked to get Perry's restaurant back the way it was, for the most part.
And turning to the plans set, starting at, I think, P1 is the page we want to start at. And one thing I should have mentioned before, what will be different about this is because we're in a flood zone, this will be elevated. This building will be elevated, unlike it was before, so it'll be at elevation 14 when it's done. So what we've submitted here and was part of the application, and let me orient you to what's up on the screen and what you have in front of you, is a analysis of each of the floors existing and proposed. And when I say existing, obviously, that was pre-fire conditions. So starting on the the top right is is the ground, let me strike that. The top half is the existing, the bottom half is proposed. Starting from the right is the ground floor, the center is the second floor, and on the left is the is the roof. What we've done in discussions with Mr. Gorman was highlight in different colors areas that are new, areas that are stairs, areas that, you know, that are going to be liquor service areas, so everyone knows what what is happening on each floor. So Alex, if you want to, go ahead and maybe start talking about ground floor up, you know, what was there before and what's being proposed.
Uh, yes, so if we scroll to the right here at the proposed ground floor, bottom right corner. Can I use a pointer on these screens?
Maybe give Jamie some direction.
Sure. So we, because we are elevating due to FEMA regulations, we need a significant ramp length and accessible entrance. So we have a proposed vestibule, which is the hatched area that's 86 square feet. So that would be the only addition to the footprint at the ground floor level. We do have some additional stairs that go up to the patio. But in terms of footprint, that is the area we're looking to make more compliant and more safe for patrons entering the building.
And because this is also the special use permit for restaurant with alcohol, which you approved, this board approved back, starting back in 2010, what are the hatched areas representing on this sheet, P1?
So these hatched areas represent the alcohol service areas, and we have designated the occupant loads in those areas as well. So just want to see it better here, sorry, 20 at the sunroom and 16 at the bar area. And again, we are not increasing occupant load. I believe we switched maybe two chairs to the upstairs, so when we go up there, you'll see the total does equal 80. So if we go to the second floor, so that vestibule due to the ground floor, right, would be vertical. The existing structure has an open-air stair that goes up to the roof deck. So essentially, we're looking to emulate that same situation over the new vestibule that would be below, that 86-square-foot footprint. We are adding an additional restroom on the second floor for convenience. In terms of gender specific, we are adding another staff restroom on the second floor. We have the hatch area for liquor service area, and that is an occupant load of 44, for the total of 80. And then the upper-left L shape in blue, sorry, go ahead.
And just some of the highlights, and I had to get my glasses to read this. But in the sort of back of the house area, that includes utilities, dry storage, liquor storage, and an office. And they also, on both floors, call out what the sort of the, what the cooking and what the prep areas are on that. But again, that's sort of a, you know, on the first floor, it talks about the prep area, the hot and cold lines, that sort of thing, dishes. And then on the, on the second floor, the pasta prep patio storage, and employees having their sort of little cubby holes and storage spaces.
Yeah, in addition to that, so we'll have some utility chases, right, that take up square footage on the second floor. We will have utility rooms that need to be elevated due to FEMA and not in the crawl space area. So when we consider that back-of-house efficiency, we are allocating, if you go back to the first floor, sorry, there's a deck and a cooler area on the, that, yep, that section right there below, that is, it is covered on the ground floor. So on the second floor, we are looking to essentially relocate some of the patron-facing dining area to that side of the facade by cantilevering and creating a floor plate over that cooler area. So the hatched area that is shown as 424 square feet, that is the area we are, that I'm referring to in terms of relocating some of that dining experience post-COVID. We want a little bit more space, too, in terms of dining, so that will help from that regard. And then in addition, that'll help separate some of the service area for coming out of the back of house and traversing through the dining space up to the roof deck and so on.
Just on the, on the second floor, I think the numbers we have is about 850 roughly square feet addition. Is that, can you talk about the cantilevered area, the new areas, if you will?
Yeah, so the new area would be roughly 424 square feet, might, which is the, what I'll say, Plan West. That would be dining, patron-facing. And then the rear, Plan North area for back-of-house. Currently, that is open rooftop right now, that we would look to capture that volume for back-of-house space. So as Elizabeth mentioned, it'd be office, dry storage, prep space, sort of ancillary space that supports the primary kitchen space on the ground floor. And that's roughly 745 square feet for that back area. So because we are expanding and sort of rotating around that patron dining area on the second floor, we have additional rooftop area on the, what I'll call, third floor, on the rooftop. Yep. So that 424 square feet is captured on the rooftop. As Elizabeth mentioned, this is roughly 1,600 square feet, about 100 square feet over what I think was previously approved. And in addition to that, because of the second-floor back-of-house expansion, we are able to get a emergency exit and a back-of-house convenience stair to the second floor. And that is cantilevered off of the building as well. So that would help with efficiency and service and access to the roof.
And in the commercial waterfront district, the height is 35 feet. Will this building be 35 feet or below in structure height?
Yeah, so from grade, we are at 35 feet to the top of our railing. So if we want to switch to the 3D images, we can kind of highlight what we just talked about in 3D. That would be P8. Yep. So the 86-square-foot vestibule increase is about half of that open stair. So that open stair is over that increased vestibule on the ground floor. You can kind of see a L-shaped, Z-shaped line on the rooftop. That is the 424-square-foot expansion, because we are expanding the second-floor dining experience on level two. And you can see the coolers there that are now covered by that second-floor area. And then we have that secondary emergency exit convenience stair for back-of-house, which is cantilevered off of the building on the rooftop. So those are majority of the volumetric areas that we're discussing. If you want to go to the next 3D image, you'll see it from a different perspective, which is P9. Again, the tent, the pergola, that's all there as is. We have a service ramp on the back, again, just because we're elevating the building to meet FEMA regulations, right? We'll have a little bit of a longer ramp back there.
So those are sort of the basic outline of what's of what's happening and the, what we're looking for to do on the interior of the building. That also has, you know, a bit of an in-volume expansion, if you will, that's not at at the footprint. One thing I did just want to show you, that's part of your package and talk about, is the elevations that that appear at P, I think, six or seven, maybe, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm wrong. There we go. Yeah, so.
Yep.
These were submitted and they're dated July 3rd. Obviously, the fire is about, not even now, about two months or so. And I think, and Perry can tell you this also, that his goal is to, you know, replicate the look in the field, be consistent with the hatchery across the street. What I want this board to know is that there are going to be changes to this, the way the actual thing looks, this is not final. So I don't know if you want to talk, Alex, about any sort of your thoughts that you're developing, just a little bit on it, but I just wanted to be, I know it's not necessarily your bailiwick, but just wanted to make sure that these are not the final versions.
Correct, these are in process, and even though they are rough, I mean, we're still painting a pretty accurate picture of what will hopefully be there in the future. But we're not showing trim detail, certain window styles, things of that nature. So really, it's in sort of that finer level of detail and where the trim is, style of windows, where maybe the arbers are going to be around the building. But in essence, we're matching the vernacular of what was there and what has been there.
I don't have any other questions for this witness.
Thank you. Mr. Zakowski, so when we say the footprint is going to stay the same, these cantilevers, be it the stairway, I don't know if the stairway is a separate, considered something separate, but, and this might, I'm not sure who I'm asking this, so it's a matter of, like, what do, how much do cantilevers count towards the court, towards the footprint?
I don't believe they're asking for any increase to footprint, just the setback for the front and the rear.
So are these, are these cantilevers as part of that foot, like, is that the same footprint?
It is.
As, as the foundation?
It is. We are walking, we are working off the existing foundation perimeter, if you will, and that is the volume that we are going vertical with.
So none of these cantilevers are extending beyond that?
There are ground level decks that we are covering.
Okay.
That has foundation to that deck.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of, I mean, and because it does seem like some of the volumes, I mean, it's just, they're, they're changing, and it's just a matter of making sure that there isn't like a, you know, a, in the bedroom bump out of a, you know, sort of like a Winnebago sort of thing, so, and, and then any of that, and most of the changes seem to be happening more waterside than they are parking lot and street side?
So street side, again, the biggest increase is the 86 square feet for the ADA vestibule at the top of the ramp.
At the top of the ramp.
That is in addition to the footprint.
Right, which was already a spa, is essentially the same space it was before?
Where the current deck and entrance is.
Where the current entrance was, okay. And do the ramps count as part of the footprint?
The state law exempts ramps from complying, like accessibility ramps, from complying with setbacks, so they're exempt.
So essentially, the front of the building is staying as it is, and, and the side, even though some of the volume, I'm sure, is changing towards the back of the building where, where use was, you know, you might be going up or something like that, but pretty much those two elevations are staying the same.
Correct.
For all intents and purposes. Essentially, you're saying all the way around, but in the back, some of the volumes are changing based on how the building is going to be.
Configured, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
As I said, CRM C may not agree with our approach on that, but we want to start here.
Okay. And then other, other stylistic issues aren't really part of our consideration. Okay, so board members, any questions for this witness? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work, by the way, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosso.
You mentioned that you're going 14 feet above ground level, right?
No, it's elevation 14, so depending on what your datum point is and what you use, it's either going to be, where are we?
Four and a half or six and a half feet, depending on what, where it is.
Yeah.
Four to six feet above the ground level, or you're at four to six?
The dirt.
Okay.
The dirt is going to be, and, and that also is like a land surveyor thing of what datum points you use, and maybe your building official might do it, but essentially, whether you call it four and a half or six and a half feet, probably is, is how it's measured, but I think, like.
14 feet above high tide line, I believe it is, or high water line.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But it will be FEMA compliant, essentially, if some, you know, storm hits or something, everything would essentially go underneath the existing, existing structure. So, I mean, there was a, you know, a thought at the beginning that perhaps some of the building could be saved and it could stay on the ground level, but that's, that's not the case, and hence the, the need to elevate the entire, the entire structure.
So the footprint that we're seeing, or footprint, the floor plan that we're seeing is, I'm noticing that's not changing much on, on the initial floors, but that might change now just based on what you know about what's there?
Well, no, I mean.
Like you can't reuse it, or?
I mean, the proposed ground floor that you're seeing is going to be up, you know, it's going to be up elevated, but.
Right, right.
That's.
You're still thinking the same sort of flow within the restaurant and so forth and the back house?
The second floor is definitely changing more.
Right, it's opening it up a little bit and, and more access.
Yeah, and then adding a little more to the, to the roof deck, and again, I was, when I went back and looked at our decision from 2020, you guys had approved 1,500 square feet, so we took your idea and ran with it.
Because we were virtual, that's why.
It's probably.
Mr. Gorman, did you want to mention something?
No, just that in reviewing the survey datum points for existing grade, it was, you know, roughly the building top of finished floor would have to be around six and a half feet, based on the information we have, to be compliant.
Perry?
Yes, Mr. Rosso, you spoke before you were sworn in.
Oh, sorry.
State and spell your name, please.
Perry Rosso, P-E-R-Y-R-A-S-O.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Excellent, so please go ahead, sir.
So we are hoping to rebuild the restaurant, very similar to what it was before. I went to Mr. Zakowski's office a month and a half ago, and he asked me what I, what, you know, what I wanted to build, and I said I wanted to build back what I had, because he had it, you know, in my mind, perfect. But of course, there are tweaks taking the, you know, removing some walls, especially in the kitchen, being able to add, you know, space above the kitchen, which was already one floor, and make more of the dining facing the water, sunset, would be ideal. So that was, you know, to be able to work within, you know, that area at, at a vestibule, because people coming in from outside, going directly into the dining room in the coldest months created, you know, a problem. So, you know, this was a vestibule was something that we was always trying to figure out, so that was something that, you know, we also added, so that, that's, yeah, I wanted to kind, I want people to see it and, and, you know, that is, look at it and say that. They know that that's the oyster bar, and then walk into, you know, the dining room downstairs and, you know, have, you know, the same setup with the raw bar and the bar where it was, and, you know, feel like they're walking in to the same, to the same building. I would say a little nicer, but we had just got done with the renovation down there, and it was as nice as it's been, so. I, I, I'm, you know, really open to, to build this thing back and, and be able to do it, you know, you know, to be open for next season, which I know which would be a lot of, a lot of things that would have to happen, and, and, and so I guess this would be the, one of the first things.
And, and when you, when you talk about, Mr. Rosso, the, the front entryway, you're, you're not changing any of the, the motion or the means of egress through the building? It's not like people are going to be sitting out, like, standing outside more, it's not going to create any more issues for, for any surrounding areas and so forth?
The architects were able to come up with a, a plan where the stairs would come up, where they, where the ramp did come up, because of course, there's going to have to be a longer ramp because of the, the increased height due to the FEMA regulation. So the, the ramp access and entrance will be, you know, closer to the tent than before. Now, where it was before is closer to where the stairs are proposed going up, so that is really the biggest difference.
And it's not going to take away any of the temporary parking or anything that would occur right outside of that area where people would gather and stand for, for valet, or even coming into the, the building at all? None of that is going to be impeded?
No, the parking lot will not.
From street movement as well as people?
No, the parking lot will not be changed or impeded.
Okay.
And Perry, then, is there also your intention to operate the restaurant in the same way you have in terms of, you know, taking reservations, valet, essentially the same modus operandi that you had before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosso. Any questions from board members? Nope, none. Thank you, Ms. Rosso.
I have no further witnesses, I mean, it is our intent to comply with, you know, the special use permit and the variance is granted before with this, you know, expansion of the interior expansion, if you will. We want to get back to the character that was there before, before the fire, and we believe that everything we're doing as we have in the past is consistent with your ordinance and meets all your, all your standards. In fact, being FEMA compliant, in fact, makes it, is, is an added benefit, you know, to the community, and that's what they're looking for sometimes, is to get these buildings to be FEMA compliant. It'll also be, you know, consistent with the oyster hatchery across the way, so it's sort of, really, as Perry said, just getting back what he had before.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else out there who wants to speak on behalf? Come on up.
For or against?
I feel like I know, I should say it. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Steve Jakes, the president of the Village of Potter Pond.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do. We're pleased that Mr. Perry is reopening the restaurant. It was hardship, he's been a good neighbor to the Village of Potter Pond. The question that I have on behalf of the 72 residents there, this, it sounds like the structure is going to stay the same, except for the back. Just curious about all the lighting?
Sure.
Is that going to stay the same?
We can ask him.
And the attorney said windows, sound.
Yep.
Can I go back to the owners of the village and say that the footprint's staying the same?
Okay.
And the lighting that they're used to across from the canal, because we have quite a few cottages that are right across from you?
That are right across from, yeah, 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 so everything from lighting, from music, all, all things like that?
Exactly.
Okay, sure, and you can come back up if we don't ask the right questions. Okay, so, Mr. Rosso, you want to talk about some of that stuff, general nuisance issues?
We've talked about this before with dark sky compliant lighting, I believe it was for the roof deck. I'm not exactly sure that's what it's called, but we have low lying light that really just, you know, we, we have it set really on the floor, the decking on the roof deck, and it shoots just across people's feet, and then we use the table lamps, you know, on people's tables so they can see what they're eating when, when it's dark, of course, you know, that is a limited amount of time in the summer with the long days, but that is what we've done in the past, and we don't intend on doing any kind of different lighting up there.
Any music, anything like that?
No music on the roof.
No music, no, not even amplified or, or otherwise, or live?
Not, not on the roof deck, no.
Okay.
Will your hours of operation remain the same as they had before?
Same hours, yes.
And Mr. Gorman, is there, is there a way to make sure that the lighting is, is appropriate, how do we know?
So the, because this is a new building, we're going to need electrical permit for all the wiring of the fixtures, and we're going to require that, the ordinance requires that there's be no light trespass off the property, so there'd be downlit, cut off lights, you know, Mr. Rosso mentioned dark sky compliant, that's like a certification for a light fixture. So that would be something the town would require.
So that, that's part of any, any building that, that would be, regardless of, of the use of the special use permit or?
For commercial use, yes.
Right.
And do you know if we have a lighting plan on file for a previous, previously approved lighting plan on file that you could compare, you know, the new proposal to the old one?
I don't, for this property, I don't think so, I think over time, it's kind of.
Okay, so a condition of approval would be, well, whether you stated it or not, a lighting plan would be required, it have, have to, has to be dark sky compliant, and Mr. Rosso has stated it won't be, it'll be similar to what was existing.
But it sounds like too, that, that it would be required, that there wouldn't be sort of off, you, you mentioned, what did you call it, not bleeding?
Like, no, light trespass or like a cut off shield?
Okay.
So a lighting plan that shows the, the calculations at the lot lines?
A photometric plan.
Photometric, thank you, that was the word I was looking for, great.
Okay, and anything else that, that's changing for, for your current, like, do you, have you talked about anything else that you're going to do differently along the waterfront that would be a potential nuisance?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, okay.
You'll continue what you've done before, which are the barge tours as well as the oysters coming in to be harvested, right?
Yeah, correct, I, I will mention on the past, I've put lights on the, on the, on the, on the pilings on the dock, which I know we're not dear to discuss, but, you know, I, I've received complaints from people in the village, and, you know, we just, we've just aimed them down, you know, so we always tried to accommodate a request like that, so that, that's, yeah.
So you're, so you're saying that you'd be open to the community reaching out to you if there's a concern about anything you had?
Always.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm not sure if that provides you what you're looking for, okay, excellent. Anyone else out there want to speak on behalf? Come on up.
Hi, Patricia Gleason, G-L-E-A-S-O-N.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Please, Ms. Gleason.
I just have a couple of questions, because they went too quickly on the slides. What is the total seating capacity?
The seating capacity isn't changing, but we can ask that question, I'm not sure if, Mr. Gorman, you know?
Because I know they did each room, I, I was able to read, second floor is 44 occupants, first floor, you have a bar area?
Yep.
How many occupants there?
We can find out, we can, you can ask us, and then we'll find out from them, unless Mr. Gorman knows right offhand.
And then the only other question I wanted to note is on the initial application. It says you want to go from 40 to 23.6, which is a variance of 16.6, it is not, it's a variance of 16.4.
Okay.
You're looking to go from 40 on the front yard setback down to 23.6, the relief is 16.4, not 16.6.
You're correct, okay.
That's all.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we'll find out about the, how many people are allowed, thank you.
The seating capacity is 80.
80?
80 total, yes.
Excellent. So it's 80, if you didn't hear, 80 folks, all right. Anyone else out there speak on behalf of this petition for or against? No? You guys want to add anything else?
No, just thank you for your time, and we look forward, hopefully, to moving forward with this project.
Yes, we all do. Okay, thank you, Ms. Noonan. Board members, any, any ideas, questions, anyone want to speak up first? Mr. Rosen, you want to?
As always, I'm constantly amazed that Mr. Rosso can carry on two projects rather than just one at a time. He was here a couple of weeks ago with respect to the, the property in Wakefield, and now he's back rebuilding the structure, and I commend him for his persistence on this, and I don't have any objection on that regard, I'm just, as I said, amazed.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Any other comments, ideas, suggestions? Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Probably more of a comment, I mean, when I look at all the materials which were top notch, as well as the presentations today, you know, I look at it as it's really a rebuild essentially as it was, right? No changes to seating capacity, same footprint, raising it up so it's better aligned with FEMA. I think you're improving the egress with the new stairs, right? So I think that's an improvement to the safety of what the new building will be, as well as the ADA improvement. I think many of us have been there in the beginning, when, when, where the vestibule, I think, is going to be a great addition. And I also notice in, in the materials that there will be a removal of a storage trailer as well, and I think that's another positive impact to the, to the lot, because then you're going to put that, I think, in that extra storage, some of the storage stuff up there. No change in the parking, which seems to run very well, the lighting plan, I think, will be, will be key to have. And I, I feel overall the relief request, it is consistent with what they had, so.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone else? Thoughts? No?
I would concur that, that it's just, it's just amazing the way you're, you're going through this, so I, I commend you and your efforts. I, I do think that this is going to create a more cohesive, safe structure. I think it's going to enable the, the flow of operations to be much more efficient. You know, I'm sure they've, they've learned with this building and the site over the.
they've learned with this building and the site, over the many years they've been there, to find the most, the greatest efficiency and use of the property, and we certainly have seen over the years that Mr. Rasso has demonstrated just an exemplary presence in the area that has allowed the community to sort of enjoy the fruits of your, of your vision, so I think it's certainly easy for myself to certainly support this, because it just sort of carries on a wonderful tradition, and is really just commendable beyond any means, so I think this, this certainly is a no-brainer for a whole variety of reasons, but you've made it easy by keeping it in the same spot, so I don't, obviously, I don't have a problem with this at all, so I don't know if anyone else was sort of preparing. Yeah.
Quick question of information, Mr. Rasso, what's your intent with the structure across the street once you rebuild here? I'm sorry?
To, the tent?
Yeah.
Not to remove the tent?
Remove it?
Yeah.
So that'll become your secondary parking lot?
As it was.
Again, is that the plan?
That is.
Okay, thanks.
And, and the state law that was enacted to facilitate the tent setup, not just for Matuna Oyster Bar, but any potentially restaurant in Rhode Island that has a casualty like a fire, there are limitations on how long that can be, that can be maintained?
I, if the building isn't, you know, ready by next spring, and that would be a very long shot, obviously, I'll push for it, but i-if it's not, then, you know, we'll, we'll set up the tent again in April, and, or maybe in March and be ready to run in April, and then we'll run it until the restaurant's ready, and hopefully that'll be the beginning of the summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to elaborate even further on that, I had to refresh my memory, the law allows, and the town council approved, the tent setup on, I think it was June twenty-fourth, twenty-third, the law allows an eighteen-month max from the date of town council approval, or until the structure, the damaged structure is rehabilitated and otherwise made fit for occupancy, so the law doesn't, the law only contemplates the outdoor service as a temporary use while rebuild is happening.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, no other discussion, anyone else out there? All right, anyone want to make a motion, or give it a shot? You can do it, I'll give it a shot, or you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the petition of Perry Rasso, six-twenty-nine Succotash Road, for a special use permit and a dimensional variance under the ordinance. The, the relief requested on the dimensional variance is sixteen feet four and nineteen feet, both front yard and rear yard, the entire application was read into the record by the chairman, and all the documentation has been entered and is part of the record, and is a wonderful documentation, it's very clear what the applicant wants to do here in his rebuilding process. The, Ms. Noonan spoke, Attorney Noonan spoke on behalf of Perry Rasso, representing these, representing his interests, and Alex Sikenski, Sikenski, am I saying it right? Sikowsky? Okay, Sikerski, okay, I got it. Also testified on behalf of the applicant, he is a, recognized as an expert architect, and has done much of the design that we were presented with this evening. Ms. Jakes and, Mr. Jakes and Ms. Gleason spoke on behalf of the applicant, they had some concerns over lighting, and some concerns that one of the requested relief was incorrect by point two feet, so that's been, that's been corrected, we recognize that the relief is sixteen-four and nineteen feet. The board finds that the special use is specifically authorized by the ordinance, because this is, was originally granted back in the day, and since there are some changes here to the internal operation and dimensions, the additional special, special use permit is required, however, the applicant has indicated that there is no change to the actual, excuse me, the actual footprint of the structure, so they are going to proceed in that, in that category with limited changes to improve the layout of the structure as it's rebuilt. The board finds that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, or impair the intent or purpose of the ordinance, or the comprehensive plan of the town, once again, because this is a rebuild of an existing business that's been there, and certainly well-recognized that it fits in with the commercial waterfront district in which it's located. We have considered the other, the other requirements of a special use permit, ingress and egress to the lot and to existing or proposed structures will not change, the parking will remain the same, ingress is being changed to comply with ADA requirements, which is not part of what we have to approve. Off-street parking and loading areas have been considered, and the noise and glare odor effects on the adjoining lots has been considered, and there'll be no change based on the testimony of the applicant to those parts of the operation, the trash and storage and delivery areas will remain the same, utilities are already there, present on the lot, and will be, continue to service the new building, there's no screening and buffering that's required at this point, and signs are, would remain the same, exterior lighting would be subject to, and will be a condition, subject to dark sky compliance, and we would indicate that the condition would also require a lighting plan to be filed with the, with the building official. Certainly, there's general compatibility with the abutting zoning districts, you have a butter, near a butter restaurant, and you have commercial operations along that area, so there's no, no problem with general compatibility. Once again, the, that's the special use permit, and I would move that that be approved, and at the same time, approve the dimensional variance for the relief of sixteen-point-four feet and nineteen feet, as requested on the front and rear side setbacks, and I move approval of the application, both the special use permit and the dimensional variance.
Excellent, Mr. Daniels, thank you very much, any other, can I get a second? A second by Ms. Ilya, any other discussion?
Just, just two points to note, that the board should know, and the applicant, too. Two-year expiration, because CRMC approval is required, although, as noted, the eighteen-month timeframe under the state law, although it is phrased as an "or" until the building is rehabilitated and made of fit, so eighteen months, that's right, isn't exactly eighteen months, if the rebuild takes longer than that, it could, the tent could be up longer, but this approval will have a two-year expiration because of CRMC. The other condition of approval will be town council review and approval of the expanded liquor service area.
Okay.
All right, so we'll add that, both of those conditions as stated by the board attorney to the application and the approval.
A second from Mr. Ilya, a second to those?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Ilya?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Motion passes. Best of success to you men. Kudos. Okay, is there anything else that we need to discuss? The meeting next month is on a weird night, correct?
I'd like to introduce the board to the new executive assistant for the town manager's office.
I know. Yes.
The board can appreciate what Jess does during the meetings and outside the meetings, and, I mean, what she does in our office every day, so it's bittersweet, but, you know, she said that she will stay on for a little bit to help the transition, and I want to hold her to that. Exactly.
But I'm still. This board, you know I work with several zoning boards, this board is a well-oiled machine, and Jess, I think, is the, is the oil that keeps it running so well.
We've seen the agendas evolve, and, as well as the documentation, because when I started here, we had stenographers still, so, yes, it's evolved a lot, so thank you very, very much, and I'm sad that I wrote a letter in support of this, but it's well-deserved, for sure. Yes, there are minutes, the minutes.
Minutes for August, so we started on that, with August twenty-seventh, not the twentieth. So everyone is still good with that? No minutes?
So we have minutes from the June eighteenth meeting, does anybody have any changes to those minutes? None? All in favor? Aye. All right.
Assistant officers?
So, we have vice chair and chair. There's no secretary or anything, treasurer?
I nominate Robert Cagnetta for chairman of the board.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then for vice chair, I nominate Mr. Daniels. Second by Ms. Hicks, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Well done. So moved. All in favor?
I was taken back a little bit by.
Maybe we could have said the average eighty-year-old, not the exceptional eighty-year-old.